I have a brief report that tomorrow the city council will reconsider a resolution to either continue allowing remote teleconference meetings or in-person meetings. So they'll take that up for consideration tomorrow. And that's all I have to report.
Since the last time the commission met, they were in favor of letting the commission have access to QuestionPro by using the foundation's EIN nonprofit number. So actually, well, I'll have more information about that because it's an agenda item on QuestionPro, but we have secured that license. And the most of the discussion was around, we met with, the foundation met with a professional videographer, an acquaintance of Laura, Linda Lawless's, and this quite a bit of, you know, for the foundation to think about and strategize with in terms of creating this multimedia piece. So we're still, it's, it's a big advantage in that this guy is willing to do some pro bono work with the foundation, but there's a lot of details to hash out. So there'll be more coming in the future when it's a little, a little more digestible. Right now, it's still kind of in the figuring out stage. So we'll have more about that in the future. And I guess we're ready to, I don't know if there's other, any, any other communications? Anyone get any email of general collection or commission concern? Sometimes that happens. I don't know. So I'm not hearing anything from anyone. There may not be any other communication. Okay. So I guess we'll go into activity reports. There's nothing, we haven't started program series, so there's nothing happening there. Website, does Commissioner Petka have any, what was added to the website?
The addition since our last meeting, a geologic atlas of the United States from the Smartsville Folio of California, some art walk updates for future art walks, and a volume called Luther Burbank, his methods and discoveries, volume 10 has been added. And, and that, if you'd like, I can email you the screenshot that I take for this. I don't know if you need that much detail for the minutes, or?
That'll be helpful so I get the spelling correct. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Petka. So Art Walk is the next thing on activities. I think all of us were aware that the, I don't know what the oversight group of, for the Art Walk felt it was best not to hold the event in January. So there was no January event. However, February is on and we're prepared to be, you know, open for the public this coming Friday. As a matter of fact, the second Friday for February with, by putting out some feelers and with some suggestions from some of the other commissioners here, we're fortunate, we've got what a confirmation for exhibits all the way through July. So there's three upcoming artists, including the one for this month in March, February and March, is Carla Coop, K O O P, Coop. She's doing a ingratitude exhibit and it features, highlights various individuals, Ron Belayo, who are community activists or, you know, are, help support the community in different ways, Myrna Hayes and other individuals. So it's kind of interesting exhibit. And she's planning a little gratitude acknowledgement in March, on Art Walk Night in March. So her exhibit is up and ready now for this Friday. April and May, we have Janet Peccarella, oil paintings, and June and July will be Erica Hagan, ceramics and pottery. And so we'll be looking beyond that into August, September. So that's considering the circumstances that we're still going through on a daily basis. I think we're fortunate to have a lineup all the way through July. So.
Chair Beecher, will you send me that information, please, what you just said? So I get the name correct?
Okay, I can send that in an email. No problem. I'll do that right after. And I think the next four items, I, because we have Lake Kim's agenda item, which kind of dovetails with children's outreach. All right. So that brings us up to a recurring business. Typically, we haven't had too much happening in this part of the agenda, but I believe Commissioner Goodman, do you want to, something that you might want to donate?
If this is the correct time, yes.
Well, this is the, yeah, the part of the agenda where we consider acquisitions.
Okay. So I've spoken to Commissioner or Chair Beecher about this. I have an older electronic piano. It's not a toy. It's a full-size, very heavy, substantial piano that I would like to donate so that we could have music from time to time. I am happy to come in on Art Walk nights and play. I have a repertoire of late 19th, early 20th century composers with an emphasis on gay women and black composers. Just in the background, nothing, you know, just sort of have music. So it's not so sterile. When you walk into the room, there's something going on. My main concern is where to store it.
Yeah.
It's a beater. It could sit out. You know, if kids play with it, it's not going to hurt it. But I thought it might be nice to have because I've updated my musical instruments and this one's an orphan.
Well, certainly, storage is not necessarily a trivial point. I mean, it doesn't have to be a deal breaker, but do you know the approximate dimensions, like height or width?
It's, it's as wide as a regular piano keyboard. And it's like a small spin it. It comes up to about your waist if you stand next to it.
Okay. So, so, so three, three, three and a half feet high or something?
That's, yeah, I would say about that.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure about the standard keyboard width.
Oh.
Is it more than two feet wide?
Yes, it, I would say it's probably about as wide as it is tall.
Well, I mean, it's a fairly big room, but.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was an alcove or a storeroom or someplace.
We have a storeroom. We do have a small storeroom.
It has a keyboard cover, so it's not exposed. So if it's in a storeroom, that's fine. We can just haul it out. We need it, plug it in.
Is it on wheels or something?
No, no, it's, it's movable.
It is movable? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
But I just thought it might be nice to have some music. And if, if there's a program where they need a keyboard, you know, it's there. They don't have to bring one.
Well, there's a couple, I mean, we can let, see what other people think. It's something we want to decide to do tonight or not. I don't know. Do you want to, you're going to come by Art Walk this Friday?
I'm planning to be there on Friday.
Do you want to see our, our storage space before you?
Well, actually, I probably, I would prefer to hear from other commission members because maybe somebody thinks it's not such a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, no.
Then all this other talk is, is waste of time.
Yeah. Well, I don't, does anybody, you hear from anyone else here?
No music lovers?
Mr. Shively is trying to speak. Who starts sixty, sixty, is it sixty-nine?
Hello?
Hi, Joanne. So good to hear you.
Thank you. It's good to be able to participate. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think that music is one of the things that's been lacking in our open house for the Art Walk. I have nothing but good comments to make about it. And thank you, Wayne. Thank you.
And if you have requests, Joanne, I will play what you'd like.
Oh, I would love it. Thank you. Do I bring you the list ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay, deal.
I, I think the rest of the, those of us here, you know, heard what the early comments were, so.
So yes, if it's okay with you on Friday, I will work with you and see if we can find an adequate storage space for it.
So I would just want to make sure there's still a couple of other of us here this evening. This is the best opportunity to say something if you're in favor or not in favor.
When you, when you say storage space, are you thinking of it not being the room?
Oh, it could be. There's no reason why it can't be. But in case it needs to be moved out of the area, it'd be nice to have a spot for it somewhere. But if there's a spot in the room where it could sit out all the time, it has a flat top. So you can actually put things on top of it. Like books or things.
Does it need to be plugged in?
To operate, yes, it does need to be plugged in.
So we might have to, depending on where it is, you might have to run an extension cord.
That's never been a problem.
So is it this, is it the consensus of the commission to have Commissioner Goodman donate the piano? Or do you want to do it the more research, have a look at the room first to see where it could be set up?
Logistics.
The logistics of the room, the extension cord, and then come back at the meeting in April to say yea or nay, or are you comfortable going forward tonight? Commissioner Shively?
Oh.
Mr. Shively, I see you trying to.
If there is a concern about where it should be stored, like when the carpet is cleaned, or when we have an open house for our Sunday lectures, when there are a lot of people there, then I think we should look at an appropriate place for it. Just a moment, please. Hello?
You're here.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I've got about three things going on at once. I apologize. Wait a minute, Terry? Terry, ask him if he's already done the back. Has he done the back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. My gardener is just leaving. Sorry to keep you waiting. Those are, would be my two concerns for any damage to it. Just when we have to move everything out of the room for carpet cleaning, or for when we have a lot of people flowing through, that may decide to use it as an appetizer table.
It works well as that.
Maybe you want, maybe, maybe you want to take a look at the proposed storage place first, and we vote on it the next meeting.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any particular hurry, right?
Well, I mean.
What we could do is go ahead and vote on it now contingent the storage space being determined appropriate by Wayne.
Right. Because if I can get it in there before the, not this month, but the next art walk in March, then I could provide the music throughout that time.
Why don't we do it that way then?
Yeah.
Can we approve it? Yeah, can prove it tonight contingent on the storage space.
Do you want to make that motion, Joanne?
Yes, so made.
Okay, is there a second?
If I'm allowed to second, I will second.
Okay. I don't see why not. So I guess we need, if this is going to be a motion, we'll need to do a roll call right in there.
Correct. Chair Beecher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Petka?
Aye.
Treasurer Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Shively?
Yes.
Commissioner Sawyer, still absent. Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Mission carries with the missionary, Sawyer absent.
Thank you.
Okay. So that covers that.
Very generous. Thank you, Wayne. That's very generous of you. And I think it will add a lot of ambiance to our art walks.
And, and plus, I hope future presentations can include that. And so that's my hope. Thank you.
Great.
So I'm not aware of any, moving on to the next item, monthly receipts, unless someone has a receipt I wasn't aware of, especially since there was no Art Walk last month. That's where most of our minor expenses that we have so far. And there's no room use request, especially with this, you know, COVID's not over with yet. So we're really not entertaining third-party use of the room. That puts us into eight with new or unfinished business. In particular, A here, probably the main point of tonight's agenda, the ad hoc committee did meet myself and Commissioner Flores and Commissioner Shively. And basically, we're recommending going with the same budget. You, I want to point out that part of the packet is the report from the finance department on where the endowment stands. And in particulars, it may have raised some eyes, perhaps. I'm not sure how closely people looked at this, but the interest amount, so if you go to the very last line before, before the totals for FY 2021, is actually parentheses is a negative amount. So it's a negative oh five percent, which may seem a bit strange, concept of negative interest. All I can say about this is that this has to do with requirements imposed by the state for municipalities that report on public monies. In a sense, they have to report it as if it were to be sold. Now, the city is not selling the underlying securities or assets by any means, but the valuation as if you were to sell it, compared to a year ago, you would actually not see the, you'd see point five, point oh five percent less than it was, was worth a year ago. So in reality, it's like an unrealized loss. In other words, there was no interest, unfortunately. So the, the endowment stays static, well, in terms of interest for the past year. If there's any kind of silver lining, we had no reason to do much expenditure. So if we had to be in a situation where there wasn't going to be any earnings for a 12-month period, at least we didn't deplete the fund any further because the only thing we spent was $195, which is really nothing compared to the $2,500 we usually ask for, to help get some of the books in the, in the current fiscal year that are being worked on by the conservatives. We used $195 from the endowment to combine with monies that came in from the general fund. The, what do we call that again? The stipend, the stipend money we normally see. So that, that, that helps. That means going forward, the full amount is still there to try to earn any interest it's going to earn in the next 12 months. And just hope that it's not static again next year, but we can't control the stock market. So I don't, there's, if you have a question on that, I could try to answer. I'm not really, I'm not a member of the finance department, so I'm just trying to put it in layman's terms. As far as the specific recommendation, it's the same budget that we proposed last year. Most of that budget is in anticipation if we resume Sunday presentations or any kind of speaker events. And we might, you know, the fiscal, this fiscal year that we're looking at starts July 1st. It starts five months from now. So maybe going July, August, September, we might be at a place where realistically, we can invite a speaker and have a sit-down audience in the room like we did a couple of years ago, you know? And then we would start publicity and maybe doing a mailer and hospitality and all these other costs that we haven't been incurring because we haven't been doing speaker events. So I, I don't know, the, the three of us agreed that it made sense just to propose the same budget. If we don't use the money, it stays in the endowment. So are any, any questions about that recommendation?
Well, I think before we have questions, we have to have a motion. Sorry. So I moved to accept the budget as presented.
Yeah. So you want to make a motion to?
I just did.
Okay. So now we, if we can entertain questions in case sometimes.
You'll have to have a second.
You have clarification questions or something else?
No, you need a second.
Need a second.
No, we need a second for us. Is that?
I think.
Was that Joanne?
Yeah, Joanne, second.
He seconded?
Yes.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. So now if there's anything someone wants to is of concern to them before we move on, on the vote? I mean, it's the same thing we did last year, was continue the same budget.
If there are no questions, I, if there's no further discussion, I call the question. Which means we vote.
I have no problem. I just like to make sure people have an opportunity. That's all.
Chair Beecher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Petka?
Aye.
Treasurer Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Shively?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim, absent. Commissioner Goodman?
Aye, and thank you, Ad hoc Committee, for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The motion has with Commissioner, absent.
Okay. Well, the next item, B, is for Commissioner Kim. So rather Sawyer, right, Lake Kim, so Commissioner Sawyer. So I'm not sure, do we skip this item in her absence, or?
We can skip it for now. If she joins us later, if not, we'll discontinue it till the next meeting in April.
Yeah, because it was her proposal. So we, I was relying on her contribution on where it stood. So we're moving on to see the McQ survey. So as I mentioned earlier, we were able to use the EIN number. So in fact, I have the, what you do is you sign up with QuestionPro on their trial product, and then they upgrade you to the full product. So we've been upgraded. It is a single user signing. So I signed in for more than one device simultaneously, but because it's a single user sign-in, the sessions don't recognize each other. So if we're going to have more than one of us working with this software going forward, we'll have to work it out where we're not on there simultaneously because that may have undesirable results. But basically, at this point, I need to look at some of the logistics of what does it mean to get the survey created using this platform? How do we get, we know what questions, we already agreed on the questions, but how do we actually start to generate them and, you know, put, put them in, into their system? And when I have a better sense of that, then I can come back to the rest of the commission and say, well, this would be, might be a job for two of us, or three of us, or, you know, see what, you know, what, what makes, what makes sense. So I, we're not, again, in any hurry necessarily to get this done. So I think between now and the meeting two months from now, we'll be, you know, in, in a position to kind of make some quick progress at that. So it is basically discussion. So I don't have to close the item if there's someone who wants to chime in or anything, thought occurs to you about what we're trying to do with QuestionPro and the survey? You know, everybody happy with just the fact that we got the license? I know, at this point, I don't, I haven't had a time to, you know, really delve into, it looks pretty straightforward. It doesn't, I don't think it's going to be that cumbersome, but it's not going to be a direct input. I think we're going to have to type in the questions from, you know, the PDF we have. Probably the route we'll have to take. So. All right. Well, I'm ready to move on.
I believe Commissioner Shively.
Somebody, yes?
Pardon me?
Were you trying to speak? Your light?
It's still on?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
No.
Well, there's no.
Excuse me, do you want me to press star nine or star six?
No, you're fine. You're fine. Just keep it as is.
All right.
Okay. All right. So I guess we're ready to, I'm not hearing the need for further discussion. So we move on to D, the dosing coverage for the, of, of the room?
Chair Beecher, we'll just continue this, keep this on the agenda for the next meeting. Correct?
Um, oh, to keep the survey on the agenda? Uh, yeah, there'll be more to say at the next meeting for sure.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Okay. So now with D, okay. I've been torn with where would be the best time to have this discussion, but I'm trying to be optimistic that with Omicron, you know, seeming to have passed its peak and other, you know, neighboring cities and so forth, starting to ease restrictions that will be into a more routine, you know, opening time, the Saturdays, the, the Tuesdays, the Art Walk nights. We may not quite be there at the moment. We are doing Art Walk, but some of the other regular opening times and even at some point, the Sundays. But we should be looking at how, you know, what does it mean to have the, to keep the room open in terms of manpower? Because up to this point, which is only since this past June, it's really fallen only to a couple of commissioners, myself and Commissioner Petka. And the intent is really to have the entire commission participating in keeping the room open. So what I, basically, I'd like to describe how we had done it before the whole pandemic thing, because I think apart from myself and Commissioner Shively, everyone else has become part of the commission post-pandemic, so to speak. And what we had done previously was to look at the minimum needed to keep the room open and see what that meant over 12-month period. So for Art Walk, strictly speaking, a minimum, you, you need one person and one commissioner who has keys to have the room open. But it's, you don't want to ask one commissioner to be there for four hours, you know, on, on a given Art Walk night, if you can avoid that. That's, I, I mean, I've done it, but I've only done it as a stopgap measure. Really, you could look at two, two hours for one and two hours for the other. The thing with just two, they have to really coordinate when one's leaving and the next arriving. Because if one person needs to leave and the other commissioner with the key hasn't arrived, then they'd have to ask everyone to leave, lock the doors, and wait for the other commissioner to open the doors again. We can't have the doors open if there's no key holder in the room. So for Art Walk nights, we've always tried to have at least three commissioners. Not, not once, you know, then you have more flexibility. One could stay one hour, one could stay an hour and a half. If one of them wants to stay two hours, you don't have to worry about as much who, when someone's leaving and who's the next one to arrive, because you could spread three people out over four hours, whatever length they're able to be there, much more easily. But to have three for each Art Walk, we really would want to have at least six commissioners participating. And right now, we don't quite have that because we have a vacancy for one, and we have another commissioner with some mobility and transportation issues that kind of preclude that commissioner from regular dosing duty. So with five, see, six is a nice number because three, there's 12 art walks. So three times 12 is 36. If you divide that by six, it means each commissioner doing six art walks a year, six out of 12, six out of the 12 months. We can still make that a goal, but with five commissioners currently with the vacancy, that would mean that half the art walks, there are three commissioners ideally, and half the art walks are only two. Now, if someone, like, I can probably do more than six. So if I did eight or nine during the year, then that would help, you know, fill in until we have that vacancy filled. But that was the previous effort was to have three commissioners per Art Walk night, meaning that everyone agreed to do six out of a 12-month period. Now, Saturdays and Tuesdays are another little dilemma. Now, Saturdays and Tuesdays are another little dilemma, because um, Commissioner Petka's been able to keep the room open a lot of the Tuesdays. He's had the added benefit of two volunteers, cuz we have two previous commissioners who have been volunteering and coming in on the Tuesdays. But that's a burden on one commissioner, because that's two a month is potentially twenty for a year. So ideally, we'd have another commissioner, if possible, helping on some of the Tuesdays. So we didn't have one commissioner doing every Tu- you know, each of the two Tuesdays. But if we have, there's only four other, if there's Commissioner Petka and four others, myself and, you know, the other three. So that's a total of five and there's four Saturdays most months. So again, we're kind of, with the absence, we're a little bit of a shortfall. If we had six, six would be ideal, if we had six commissioners, because two could do one Tuesday each and the other four could do one Saturday a month. So the closest we can get is a goal of everyone on the commission of the five of us trying to do one Saturday or Tuesday a month. So six artworks and one Saturday or Tuesday. And with the Saturdays and Tuesdays, again, it would mean someone doing more than one. So if, if I saw there was a month and we only had three Saturdays filled, I would do an extra Saturday. You know, to, rather than have the room closed. And hopefully, if Commissioner Petka saw a Tuesday that, you know, was open, uh, there was nobody available, he might be able to do two Tuesdays that month instead of just one. So, I mean, this is, I'm just trying to show what we're trying to, that what the needs are to, to keep it open on each of the artworks and each of the Saturdays and the two Tuesdays versus the manpower we have at the moment. Uh, this might be another way to do this, but um, I don't know, is, is six artworks a year and one Tuesday or Saturday a month, is that amenable? Are people opposed to that? Do they think they can do at least that much or occasionally a little more? I mean, I, on this item, I really need to hear from people. This is not the kind of an item just to, just to listen to and then, you know.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'm never shy about stuff. Tuesdays are out for me because I have a, a standing
Okay.
On Tuesday evenings. As you know, I'm happy to be there for part of the time on the artworks on the Fridays, and I can do a Saturday or two.
Well, that, we see that, and now if others are in a similar situation, that's what will cover a lot of ground. I don't know where, I know Commissioner uh, Flores has indicated that uh, she would like to, uh, at least some Saturdays. I don't know whether Tuesdays are possible for her.
But I was, I was quite content to continue to try and do both Tuesdays a month, because I'm retired and I have a slack schedule. And I know some of the other commissioners are, are still working and have other daytime obligations.
Okay.
Both Tuesdays were not a problem for me and last some far ranging appointment that I lost track of. Now, I opted not to open the last few Tuesdays following the lead of City Hall being closed to the public and the JFK Library suspending public programs. So I anticipate especially, uh, the, the JFK was supposed to go back to public programs on the fifteenth, which would be the third Tuesday. So I've been expecting that I would be opening on, on the third Tuesday um, in two weeks. Especially if um, City Council votes tomorrow to go back to public meetings. So at, at this point, I'm content to keep doing both Tuesdays to give people with a, a less freedom in the daylight hours um, the opportunity to be available on Friday nights and Saturday afternoons.
Right. Well, that's certainly appreciated, uh, Jim, and I'm hopeful that the, uh, the vacancy won't go, you know, unfilled for too long. And if we're really fortunate, whoever comes in and fills that vacancy, maybe they have some ability to, you know, uh, be there on, on certain Tuesdays, so that you're not, you know, left with it every month, twice a month. Um, is, uh, can Tiffany uh, have make any comment?
Oh, hi. Yeah, actually, I was curious. Remind me again, what are the hours on Tuesdays?
Uh, two to four.
Oh, okay. Um, as long, you know, I could do a couple Tuesdays. Um, I just gotta schedule it and that, that's not a problem. So if there's.
And you have some Saturday, uh, uh, a Saturday here and there as well?
Oh, I can do Tuesdays, Fridays and Saturdays, absolutely. The artworks, you know, so I'm, I'm open to um, sign up for whatever hours that you need. Tuesday is the only one that I would just kinda need to schedule a little bit in advance.
Okay. And I think we still don't have Commissioner Sawyer. Um, and then I think it hopefully might go a little bit without saying that this idea of trying to, everyone trying to do six artworks and at least one Tuesday or Saturday a month is super reliant on everyone not doing the same art walk or the same Saturday or Tuesday. We need to spread ourselves out, which is why we have that initials on our website calendar. That's where that's so valuable. So you go to the calendar, you see where initials are or where initials are, are absent and look for where then there are no initials yet. And those are the, the spots to grab. Because typically, if you see, except art walk, we have more than one, but especially Saturdays and Tuesdays. Um, if you wanna do more than one Saturday, well, fine. But try to fill in the empty Tuesdays or the empty Saturdays first and then worry about doing extra time. So, does that, does that make sense?
Um, I just have a question about that. So, oh, based, so um, that calendar, we can log in from home and, and.
Yes, absolutely, anywhere.
I didn't realize that. Okay, so then that's how you're proposing, that we'll go into the, we need to log into the calendar and then just put our time that we're available?
Yes.
Oh.
You can do it by, via, via a smartphone, a laptop, desktop, any internet connection.
Okay, 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 great. Then I can, I will take care, care, care of that.
That's why that's so valuable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So this isn't a uh, a motion, but um, I'm kinda hearing a consensus that it's a reasonable way to move forward. So um, I'm hoping people out of their own motivation and, you know, sort of forward thinking will, will proceed, but you know, a couple of meetings from now, if it looks like things are lagging, you know, I'll have to play the uh, reminder guy, like, you know, we said we were gonna do this, so, you know, use the calendar, get your initials on there, you know? So, um, did uh, Commissioner Shively wanna say something?
Um, no.
Okay.
Thank you for.
Okay, I was, I just saw the, the symbol, the symbol go on, that's all. All right. So I think if there's enough uh, uh, discussion on that, then there was one more item uh, on our agenda about uh, potentially reactivating one or more of the um, activity uh, categories we had. I don't, uh, Commissioner Goodman, did you wanna have any thoughts about the writers or is that premature?
Sure. Well, I mean, I would like to start these three programs back up again when it's possible to have the public in, in a forum that's conducive. Uh, I would be very happy to lead the writing workshop. I'd be very happy to either facilitate or work with somebody who's facilitating the book club. And I would love to get a schedule of speakers going, but at this point, it's really hard to schedule somebody, because we don't know when we can actually have people in the room from public. So uh, I would like to start exploring these things. If anybody wants exploring these.
Oh, exploring, exploring.
If anybody is interested in working with me on it, that'd be great. Uh, one of the questions I do have is, would it be possible to combine these act, the, I'm sorry, not the uh, speakers, but the book club or the writing group on a Tuesday evening or a Saturday? So that
Yeah.
the staffing won't be so thinned out, because if we have.
That's been done in the past.
Okay, cuz if we have to open it up and.
No, Noah Dove used to do things on Saturday simply because the room was already open.
That, that would be my preference, because I think that the staffing that you've just talked about sounds like we're very thin at the moment. So if we were able to schedule those events for the same time that the room is open, Saturday afternoon sounds great to me. Uh, that would be, be a great time to have a writing group, great time to have a book club. And I would um, ask permission if, if that's what I need to do once we get started, to talk to Linda at, not Linda, Karen, sorry, Finley at Alibi Book to partner with us, because if we're gonna have a book club, we need to set, have a, a, a place where people can go and purchase the book.
Yeah.
If they wanna have a paper copy of it. And also, if we have speakers, then she could be our salesperson to bring copies of the speakers' books and then sell on site or representative. Uh, it's, I've done this in the past, working with a bookstore makes it much easier, cuz you don't have to deal with cash, cards, sales tax. If you bring a partner in, they do all that for you.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, if it's too premature to, to contact Karen, or if anybody has a, another idea of another bookstore, but I think.
Yeah, well, I think.
She's always shopping town.
Yeah. Um, well, I might, so that, that's a model I, I'm not aware that been done at the McKeon. Doesn't mean it can't be, it's just, I've not seen.
As an example, when I did my series a couple of years ago, talking about some of these books, I brought my own books and people purchased them from me directly and I dealt with that. But if we're inviting people to come in and speak, I don't know that they wanna be hauling their own books in and be responsible for taking money. They just wanna sign books. So if we had a partner like Karen, that she could bring in a certain number of books and then she would handle the sales and then the authors could just sign.
Yeah, we may just, I mean, actually, it's probably good that we have, I think it's Zach, Zacharoli, is that her name? Annette, right?
Yes, I'm here. I'm listening to this. I'm, I'm thinking it.
So I'm not sure about.
A commercial aspect. Yeah.
In the past, hello? Yeah, we've accepted donations, everything that we've done, like with um, uh, what do you call it? A complimentary wine glass as a result of a donation or a, a used book as a result of a donation. But directly selling, even with a partner in the city space, I, I'm not saying it can't be okay, but I'd like a little more reassurance at some point that we're not stepping on toes or something.
Yeah.
About doing that.
We can't be a gift of public funds. So that would be that, you know, that's, that's uh, illegal and it's in the constitution. So if you're providing public resources for someone's private gain, that would be a gift of public funds. And so.
Okay.
So that's how you frame it.
We can't have a private company come into a public space and have business.
Correct.
Okay.
Because then you're, you know, if they need a place to do their reading or to set up their book sales, that would be a gift of public funds. It would also be a gift of public funds if you're providing any support staff whatsoever that our staff city paid, because then you're paying salaries towards supporting this commercial endeavor for some.
No, I don't think we would pay them. They would just.
I just mean in terms of janitorial. I mean, that's what is, is factored into like giving someone your public space. So.
Okay, but.
We do have permits. And so if the person wanted to get a permit and pay a fee, um, you can use the property, including City Hall.
Okay.
Oh.
I think there is a path forward. You just have.
Oh, with a permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Laura, if I may, I don't see a problem then if we have a book club and we pick a particular book and Karen just happens to be carrying that book, we could recommend people purchase it at that store, as long as she doesn't come onto the property to sell them. Is that correct?
Or if they, you know, you, you circle around, you're gonna have a book reading and everyone go buy the book at her bookstore. I think that would be okay.
Okay.
If you can get a library or there's so many copies at the bookstore and you're just, where they can get it, they can get it wherever they wanna get it.
Okay, so.
Karen would be one of many places that they can get. I think that's how you phrase it, so it's not sole sourcing.
Right. Okay. So uh, do I need to ask permission to approach Karen at this point or?
Yeah, well, I would.
So because they say it takes so long, if she wants to apply for a permit, it may take months to get that. So I would wanna get.
It doesn't take months. It's through the part, it's through Public Works and they, and you go and you apply for a, um, you know, that's the thing, I, I don't with, with uh, City Hall being closed, I, that would wait.
Yeah, so.
Well, if it's the emit permit, if uh, they're asking that you uh, submit your application six weeks in advance.
That's, so she, she'd need a permit for every event? She couldn't have a standing permit?
I think it's limited to how many uh, permits are allowed, how many activities are allowed.
Okay. Yeah, I get it. All right. Thank you.
So, so Wayne, may, maybe for the next meeting, do you wanna have like a little outline or something in the packet that you know, the rest of us can understand what you're uh, proposing and.
Sure.
Yeah, that, that would so kinda make it more.
Yeah, so Annette, if I may ask to carry this item over to the next agenda, thank you. And I'll, I'll casually discuss this with Karen in no official capacity, just to get a sense of if she's interested. She may not even be interested. Who knows?
And you know, the, the next meeting, we could consider having a motion to move forward with um, a new version of book club writers group, you know, since all the previous ones are defunct at this point.
Right. And of course, we need to wait and see what the virus weather is like.
Yes, yes, yes. But we could still get the wheels in motion, even if we don't announce a first gathering.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a presentation in April.
Great. That would be perfect. Um, that's kind of, that brings it up to announcements, that we get into the close of our agenda. And uh, does anyone need to make an announcement? I'm not hearing anything. Um, we're just move the next meeting date of April fourth and adjournment. Is that where we're at?
Okay.
I was, I was curious when, if the, we have any news on filling the vacancy before we close for tonight?
So.
Uh, it's for all the commissions, it's open until someone applies. The uh, the council did make uh, had interviews last, I believe it was, on a few of the commissions and they will make those uh, appointments uh, on the twenty-second. I don't know if anyone uh, had applied for the McKeon vacancy. So that will remain open until there's applications.
So if you know anyone who might be interested, please encourage them. Uh, well, I guess we're ready to adjourn then. I appreciate everyone bearing with the technical problem.
I moved to adjourn.
Hey, do we need a second to adjourn?
Yes. A second?
Okay.
Okay, we are adjourned at five forty-three.